Okay.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
The study session in the Mohammed Seymour Board of Education is called to order. It is six thirty PM, Monday, November third. At this time, I'd like to remind anyone attending in person to please sign in and silence their cell phones. I'd also like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board, read the visitor guidelines, which are found on the table right outside the door, and complete the attached public participation form and bring those over to Sarah. Bannister?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Buchholm?
Here.
Rock?
Here.
Severance?
Here.
McMurray?
Here.
Let's stamp it.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All had a chance to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Removed.
Second. Any discussion of agenda? Okay, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented say aye. All those opposed? Okay, any public participation? No. Aye.
Best meeting of the year.
Yes, especially today.
Especially this year, yeah.
Especially this year. Okay, so Dr. Bagby, you want to get us started or are you?
Yes, I sure do.
All right.
Welcome to the best meeting of the year. As you have all heard, our summative designation, so we'll share that with you for those of you for the hopefully many times you've heard it now because it's so exciting. So we're going to review our summative designation, highlight and show progress we've made. Illinois School Report Card. How does this fit into our strategic plans, school improvement plans, cycle of continuous growth? And then our buildings will each share their plans for school improvement for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. You'll see something a little new. We were trying out some three-year goals in some cases that kind of align with our strategic plan. We really dove into those at our admin team retreats at the end of last school year. And these four amazing principals have really bought into that and have really, I think, enjoyed being able to like forecast out similar to how we've done some of our curriculum implementations and stuff like that. So, so that's kind of exciting as well. All right, so you've seen this before. This has not changed from the other times that you have seen it. These are the five basically buckets or groups that the state of Illinois puts different schools into based on their performance on different indicators. And so exemplary is essentially the top ten percent of schools in the state of Illinois with no underperforming subgroups and not having a high school that has a graduation rate of less than sixty-seven percent. Okay, most schools in the state of Illinois fall in the commendable range. This basically goes all the way from above five percent to below ninety percent. So as you can imagine, that's a huge range of schools. Anyone above five percent, above the five lowest five, and under the top ten percent fit into the commendable range. So that's a huge, huge range. Targeted support is essentially you have a subgroup that is performing in the bottom five percent of schools in the state of Illinois. Everything else might be, you know, at or above, but you have one subgroup like children with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, English learners, things like that, just not performing in the top five percent of schools in the state of Illinois. And then if performance still is a struggle after some of those supports, we have those bottom two categories. Okay, however, great news. All Mohammed Seymour schools for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year from that twenty-four, twenty-five school report card were in the top ten percent of schools in the state of Illinois. So all four. Huge accomplishment, so thank you for that. We are still, I haven't seen the spreadsheet released from ISB, but really curious if we have other school, like school districts, how many have all, if they're a K-12 district, all their schools performing at that level? That's a huge accomplishment and that is not something that has just happened by happenstance. Some very strategic targeted efforts by the buildings, by our strategic plan. So thank you for the strategic plan. Thank you for help guiding the district. Thank you for Dr. Lee for his leadership through that. And thank you to our building principals for taking that, buying into that, wanting to make three-year goals themselves. None of this happens without all that work, all the work of our teachers, our students, our parents supporting our students getting here every day. That's a huge community and team effort and not like, we can't do that alone. So thank you to all around for all of that. It's a really, really huge accomplishment, so very, very proud. Okay, so what goes into that summative designation? You'll see two kind of indicators. Student growth is the first one. Student growth is fifty percent basically of the elementary, the middle school rating. And they're looking at growth in ELA, English Language Arts, and they're looking at growth in math. It's twenty-five percent for each of those. But essentially you can just see from this little graphic here, it's looking at prior year testing. How are students doing from year over year compared to their peers of the same grade in the same subject? Are they growing at the same rate? Okay, so when you see growth, that's what we're talking about there. So you see that right there. Again, these haven't changed since you've seen them before, but ELA growth being fifty percent of that elementary, middle school band, where the graduation, fifty percent of theirs is the graduation rate. Okay, you see other things on there like proficiency, so that's like the number of students hitting that meets and exceed threshold and how many per the state of Illinois should the school be hitting. Science, that's ISA, chronic absenteeism, so students, if they're considerably chronically absent, if they miss ten percent or more of days of a school year. And you'll see a lot about that here in a minute and in all these school improvement plans. Climate survey is that five essential survey we take every year and that is just, hey, did our students complete that at a rate of a hundred percent? We get all the points, so things like that. Ninth grade on track is just our kids basically not failing their classes. If they have one or more F after first semester, they would not be considered on track for graduation. So monitoring that, making sure they're on track to get those credits.
Go back, is our access testing, is that what's measured in the?
Yeah, the ELPTP, so English Language Progress to Proficiency. We do not have enough yet, it's getting close. We would have to have twenty or more students getting that, receiving that access testing in a building. If we had pre-K in this building, we would hit it. But pre-K is considered separate by ISB, so it's, pre-K is considered its own entity and then K-1, 2 are. So we're getting close, but we are not there yet. We receive those scores on individual kids. Are they making progress towards their English proficiency basically over the course of five years? Like we would expect them to, or are they staying stagnant? Or are they maybe regressing? The goal is for them obviously to be progressing in that and that is the access test, yes. Okay, so in your folder you also have this. The cool thing on this is you see green and blue in every box, which is great news because that means we either have received full points, couldn't have gotten any more the past two years, or green meaning we went up in every box and we did that. So that is fantastic news. So you see growth not only in the attendance or the chronic absenteeism. We actually want more points in that category, you don't want less. It's kind of like an opposite or an inverse sort of thing. Yeah. So climate survey, did we have them fill it out, things like that. So you can see that we had growth in all those categories. You'll see some like Mr. Martin, chronic absenteeism, you're like, you can only get twenty points, but he's got twenty-two point two-three. That is because the kids at Middletown K-2 do not take the five essentials survey. Okay, so the points, those five points were distributed over to his chronic absenteeism category. So if you were to take twenty-two point two-three minus five, that would put him in line with, if you wanted to compare like Lincoln Trail and Junior High. Okay, so you'll see here, the really cool part two is if you see the points to exemplary over there on the third from the left column was eighty-one point nine-nine for the elementary and junior high this year. All three of those buildings, they weren't even close, they were well above that. It's huge. You see the high school points to exemplary just because they have a couple different categories, ninety-three point oh-two. Okay, so doing very, very well. And then you can see if you just want to look for historical, you can see the growth we've had since twenty-three and twenty-four there as well. So it's just an overview, a little bit of a snapshot, any questions on that? Okay, so one item that we, as you know, from school improvement plans last year, you'll see them this year as well. District attendance has been a huge focus. Several of you have commented or when you've been in our buildings or notice that absenteeism or being at school, like you can walk into a lot of our buildings, most of our, all of our buildings and tell. Being at school is important, attendance, monitoring it is important. It's up on the screens, it's up on the doors, it's in the announcements, et cetera. Letters are going home, conversations of how to support families and making sure our kids can get here. And so you can see here, again, this doesn't just happen by happenstance either from twenty-four to twenty-five. About half, I know it's a little less than that, but about half our chronic absenteeism was cut in half from twenty-four to twenty-five. And that is district-wide, each of these buildings, all of them saw it about cut in half. Okay, so a lot of strategic steps to make that happen. If our kids are in front of our amazing teachers, they're getting an amazing education for us to be able to help them grow and provide whatever other supports they may need, so.
For clarity.
Yeah.
There was no change in how the data was calculated.
So that was part of our process. So there was concerted efforts. We did work with our technology team to make sure that we were reporting it correctly to the state. We did find in some instances where a student who may have been gone for an hour a day was being marked half a day absent. So we got that cleaned up, so that was part of that whole team effort of looking at that. We would not have cut it in half just with that alone, but it was a big contributor. Making sure how we report to the state is also how other schools report to the state. So we're having an apples-to-apples comparison. What we give the state is what they report on.
The state didn't shift anything.
Yeah.
We did a better job of cleaning up things.
We cleaned up some data, yep. But we also did a lot of other concerted efforts and things like that, but it played a huge part to your point too.
Can you back test that?
We could. It's a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of, like, it's every day, every period of attendance, we could, if we wanted to, we could. But yeah.
I don't think there'd be that big of a difference.
No, there wouldn't. It was a significant factor. We can't say it's not a significant factor, it was not the only factor though. Yeah. Great question. Okay. Key strategic plan indicators, you're going to, you've heard some of these things through updates, whether it's through strategic plan updates that Dr. Lee has provided. You also see a lot of these indicators in the school improvement plans this evening, so there's just two slides here. These are the strategic plan action step goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So what you see a lot of up there, I'm not going to read them all to you, but just summarizing literacy implementation at the K-5 level. The sixth grade team was involved in that last year, so that's why it does say K-6 up there and they have some work coming up here in January that they're going to embark on. Christine, Mrs. Northrup in the Special Ed Department are working on, they collected some data about co-teaching models and things like that and surveys last year and they're working on a plan this year to come up with a professional development plan for our co-teaching model. We have been engaging our six, twelve math teachers on how we can continue our growth in meeting the needs of all of our students this year. So they have been dedicating their time to just take another step to be even that much better in our math classrooms. K-5, they've been updating, sixth grade's done some work with some of the CPM curriculum, but they've been in their third year of into math and we've had goals for them throughout. Ms. Din, who is here tonight, she is a big part of Goal 1A, twenty through twenty-five, which is essentially our whole MTSS system, multi-tiered systems of support. So how we provide kids intervention, making sure we have a strong tier-one instruction, so what every kid receives every day, what are our interventions look like? She's been leading and off to a great start of leading our district MTSS team. One of her big goals this year is to revise and update our protocol so that we have a new protocol just with some updated measures, some updated interventions we have, updated team members. Just updating it, needs updates, it was a good, good plan from where we started from, just need some updates. So she is working on that this year. And then just some of the things like moving forward, working on some reporting standards. What are we really looking for at each grade level, K-6? Some assessment, professional development coming our way. And then, as you already approved this year, some different CTE, dual credit AP, looking at those opportunities for kids and things like that is always also on the forefront there. Okay, so we just kind of went like high-level strategic plan where we're at. As I mentioned, we started this summer at an admin retreat, so in that upper right-hand corner, at an admin retreat where we all dove into the strategic plan, started working on our school improvement plans as a, as a district-wide team with our buildings. So we did all of that work, then these guys got with their buildings and they started to continue to fine-tune and meet with their leadership teams and their teachers. We had a K-5 retreat, there was a six-eight retreat, there was a nine-twelve retreat over the summer and then that further got defined and you're going to see some wonderful school improvement plans tonight. So that's where we're at in that cycle. And then our teachers obviously have been hard at work starting to implement some of those things. So, any questions on that part? If not, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Martin to go over Middletown Prairie's school improvement plan. Alrighty, Mr. Martin, you're up.
Do you have any other questions? All right, so Dr. Bagby did a phenomenal job introducing kind of the process. So I won't repeat the summer stuff that we did, but we did a lot of work before the school year started. And then we carried that on to our, our leadership team where we meet with our department chairs. We start off the year twice a month and then we take it down to once a month as the year gets started. So feedback has been a big part of what I like to do when I come up with goals and I would be remiss if I did not give a shout out to my two assistants. Tracy Beecher and Caitlin Schroder are instrumental on feedback on certain goals and as a team coming up with all four, so I want to thank them for that. Successes, I think that the state report card speaks for itself. I'm very, very proud of the staff and the things that we've asked them to do to get to that point. We grew our red students in math and reading, another huge thing that we've been trying to focus on the last several years and we improved on our five essentials principal trust, which I'll speak about at goal number four tonight. All right, so the first two you're going to see are very, very similar. They're both three-year goals, they are both big goals when it comes to ELA and math. The first one is ELA. We don't really know what our data looks like yet because we have a brand-new instrument. Star Benchmark is something that we've moved to as a district. We're excited to see what it has to do, but we can't really, I don't feel comfortable making a year goal without knowing what that looks like by experience of four years. So I think if we have a three-year goal and really try to continue to, you know, go on what we've been doing the last several years and add more things to that to continue our success with our progress in our ELA, I think that we're going to have a better idea of what for three years from now. Hopefully, we're getting increase our, instead of sitting here talking about the twentieth percentile and trying to get eighty percent above that, that's where I've been for several years. I feel like we're there now, I feel really good about the progress that we've made. So it's now to start talking about those bubble kits. Can we get some of those kids in that yellow and push them up to the green? Can we get those greens to push them up to the blues? So I really want to try to increase by five percent over the next three years and we'll adapt and adjust as we see, as we start getting some real data and see if that's a possibility or maybe that's a low target, we don't know yet. So you can see our year one, year two, year three plan. But the thing, the key activities that we're doing here is the star benchmark. CQLA is a brand-new curriculum that we have, a core four, which are kind of the non-negotiables we're trying to work with. We have grade level data days that we went through with every teacher, K through two, when it comes to the star benchmark, to kind of talk about math and reading. Our MTSS system, Caitlin Schroder has been put in charge of the academic portion and Tracy Beecher of the behavior side. So I think with that expectation and that communication to our staff, they know who to go to. And we have a pretty good system where we're getting floating subs and getting to see more kids, talk about more kids. So I feel good about some of those things from previous feedback. PD, we had a PD day today for CQLA. Our upper admin has, and our coaches have done a phenomenal job of supporting the implementation of CQLA. Caitlin Schroder has been a big part from MPE specifically for CQLA and UFLY and I feel like those two things in itself has kind of changed the way that we think about teaching reading at this level. And I think that's why we're starting to see some progress too. Win time is something that's still, I think, in the next three years is something we're going to be using some PD time for, to try to make sure we're using that to the best of our ability. But that is now into our master schedule for math and reading for the very first time. So we're excited to build off of that and get better with that time. PLC time, which is where our staff meets twice a month in big groups with the grade level, intentionally to strengthen CQLA and UFLY. And then also we have research-based interventions for tier-two and tier-three when it comes to reading. So we want to continue building on those things for the year one, year two, year three with adjusting and adapting as we see fit with the start data. Math, I'm, I'm, again, very, very similar, so I'm not going to read that to you, but it's the same things I just talked about, but with a math focus. So if we look at those activities, star benchmark is what we'll use for math. Like I said earlier, math for the first time is built into our master schedule. I think we probably need over the next three years, some PD base of our data on how to use that time. I think our math coach would be an excellent person to utilize for that. Into math, this is year three of our curriculum, data days is also dedicated for math data time. This is our second year of ever having a math intervention that we use bridges. So we would like to, over the next three years, to build on that and build our toolbox a little bit more. So if intervention of bridges is not working for a kid, we can make an adjustment and change the intervention. We're not there yet, but over three years I'd like to get there. And then again, PD with the math coach. The last, the last two goals are one-year goals. This is something that Tracy Beecher and I really collabed with and we worked hard on analyzing the data and Tracy, through her PBIS lead, has asked the teachers to document minor behaviors. So we've always documented our major behaviors that come through the office and we talk about the difference between a major and a minor with teachers. But the minors are things that consume our day a lot of the time or the teachers' day a lot of time that we want to focus in on. How can we at the tier-one level change and address some of these things? So our goal is to decrease the minor discipline referrals by fifteen percent compared to the same period last year. And what, what are we doing for that? Well, teachers are starting to document those the way that Tracy has taught them through the PBIS direction. We have a Bulldog Way Day, that is a tier-one day where we're trying to teach all the kids what it means to be a bulldog, what that looks like here. We do that beginning of the year and then we'll have a refresher in January. PD with our district CBA and our PBIS tier-two, tier-three team, so a lot of collaboration with them on how to document the behaviors, try to find the antecedent and how we can address that in small groups. PD with PBIS coaches and they also have some walkthrough data through these coaches. We have a team that Tracy leads that we call the PBIS Leadership Team. It's mixed up tier-one and tier-two, tier-three. And they have been working closely with, with some PD, with the PBIS coaches. Also, we have had a very good collaboration with the kids' coaches. They are a group that focuses in on pre-K and kindergarten and we've asked them to collab with us on defining what play looks like and learning through play at the kindergarten level. And that has been great for all twelve sections because our focus is equity of what our kids should be experiencing through, learning through play. And there's three different types of play that we have defined as a team and the one that we've really focused in is that guided play. So we have built into our master schedule the allotted time that's been given to us through this PD that we should be scheduling. Many, many different tries at the master schedule, but we got it finally and Caitlin Schroder has a lot to do with that schedule. But we have been able to give that amount of time so where the kids are doing centers where they're learning through their play. And we have had some great collab with the kids' coaches where they are coming in and giving some feedback throughout the way. Tier-one SEL lessons, we have, the classroom teachers are doing some SEL lessons. We have our social workers coming in and doing some lessons. Health class, which is everyone gets at the tier-one level and I do a weekly video that ties into the health, tries to put a focus of the week on what they might see. Something that they can continue with through their morning meeting. And finally, climate and culture. If you guys know who I am, that is probably one of the most important thing to me is that our building is a place that you want to work at, which means it's the place that kids want to come to. So last year I focused in on the five essentials data on improving principal teacher trust that did improve by nine points. I wanted to bring this back up just so that we're not, we're not good, we're not comfortable with just increase of nine. I want to get it back to where it was in twenty-three, twenty-four, which is a score of sixty. I want to continue working on that and just being real and put it out there and being vulnerable to having open discussions with my leadership team and with the staff about ways that we as admin team can improve and continue working on that trust. So those are the things that we're having at our department chair meetings and we're going to continue looking at improving MTSS. The new master schedule includes two win times, so things that we have heard in feedback of needing, we're trying to make scheduling better. We have an admin roles document that kind of helps the staff know who to go to for what issue. And something that I need to probably do a better job of is I think I'm pretty good at pointing out the things that aren't great. I need to probably do a little bit better job of celebrating the successes from the five essentials. So when I presented this to staff today, I told them in the next couple of meetings, I'll continue to look at those strong components that came back from the five essentials and celebrating those and pointing those out. So to wrap up, here's some academic highlights, always good to put some kids up there. We have pre-K kindergarten, first and second grade all represented up here in some culminating activities through our CQLA program. There's a lot of fun things that they do to get kids excited, engaged. In a couple of weeks, we're going to be the spotlight and we're going to bring some kids in, dive a little bit further into this so that you can see what they're all about. But that one middle thing I just want to point out, I've shared with the staff, that's super proud of us on the bell curve, beyond the exemplary and really pushing up there to the top of the stage. So very, very proud of the staff, very proud of, of the Bulldog Nation. Questions?
There's a pretty big difference in change between the one-year goal and three-year goals. So like five percent increase in reading and math proficiency versus fifteen percent change in, in discipline referrals. And I'm sure those are not perfectly comparable by any means, but I am curious. I mean, that, that's a pretty big impact in one year. Can you speak to, is it because reading and math proficiencies are already pretty high? Maybe even harder to have a bigger impact in that area?
Yeah, I'll speak to the fifteen percent, how we came up with that first. And then the five percent is still probably why we have three years because it, it might adjust because we don't know what the data is going to say. But the fifteen percent, we looked at where we were in October compared to where we were now and we have seen a significant decrease. Sometimes that's just new group of kids, we had a smaller kindergarten, maybe that's why. But kindergarten last year was our, and it still is, is our highest amount of minors because kids are learning how to do school for the first time. So there's a lot of little minor behaviors. So there's a lot of little minor behaviors teachers are always constantly dealing with. Yeah, so it's something that doesn't mean a principal to come, come deal with, but maybe distracting. Maybe they're messing with their neighbor's paper or something that can kind of continues even after addressing to continue to do it. Um, and we have those minor forms kind of generate if there's the same similar behavior that we're seeing. Is there a skill that we need to teach as a group at, at the tier one level? Or is it, does that kid need a, a smaller group setting to learn that skill? Um, so those are the things. And, um, we do think through the things we're doing through P B I S, we can decrease that, um, compared to what we did last year. But yeah, back to your question about the five percent. Um, I've always last few years have focused in on getting eighty percent of our tier one above that twentieth percentile. And like I said, we're there now. Um, but now kind of looking at where we are is, I'm not sure what winter benchmark is going to look like for star. What it's going to look like at, uh, the spring in fast bridge, we see a, a huge. The goalpost changes and it gets very, very hard for especially our first grade winter. So I'm curious what that looks like at the star with benchmark. Um, I know there's different because it adapts to the kids. There's certain kids who get to a certain point where they get to a different test at, at first grade level. So I really want to experience it and see what it looks like first.
So the goalposts can move in reading and math, but that behavior is always bad behavior.
Pretty much.
Just sum it up in one sentence.
If I can get fifteen percent less so that bad behavior, I can focus more on the reading and math, right?
Mr. Martin, uh, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
A lot of hard work there. Uh, one of the things I heard you, what I was concerned with is you've obviously, if you could define this as winning, you're winning. How do you continue to win? And it looks like you're, you've got that lined up. So I'll talk to you for that. And it's hard to get there. It's even harder to stay there.
I, I agree wholeheartedly that now that we're here, we don't want to see it dip, right? So continue with the momentum we have is, is what we're trying to do. And, and I think the two behind me who are here supporting, who, they're, they're just go-getters. They want to keep on moving, moving hot up the goalposts and, and making us better. So I think that's a big part of it.
Something that's been consistent with you is always moving that, that goalpost up and everything satisfied and I continue to see that. So.
Thank you.
Just kind of wanted to piggyback off what, what Jeff said, when, when you look at where we were at in twenty-twenty-three. Where we're at now specifically for your building. It's pretty amazing. I mean, like everyone's improving. The spread there is pretty, uh, outstanding. So just kudos to all the effort. Um, and I think I've seen growth in you from these meetings and what you're implementing and the team that you have around you. And just your, uh, leadership abilities like growing, getting stronger. So I want to tip my cap to you and.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
I'd like to add the same. I've, great job, great job. And my favorite thing was your favorite thing, the goal, the climate and culture. I think that is so important to have that trust because that's the foundation to everything.
Right.
And if you can, you're going to get it up. I have no doubt. And I think five percent is not high enough. But I do get it. Like you don't have it. Like you're already there, so it is hard to climb. But I, I think next year you're going to be, you're going to be pleasantly surprised. I mean, the, the bar, that's, that's crazy. You hit the bar high. You should be very proud.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Just want to say congratulations to Tracy and Caitlin as well. Very, very good job.
Can I ask Tracy a question?
Absolutely.
What are you using to track your minors?
Um, actually Din and I collaborated on some different Google forums. Um, so the teachers have access to it right on our dashboard. Um, and then I look at those like briefly, see if there's anything consistent that I need to address. And then our P B I S team actually goes through them every once a month on a six-week cycle. And that's how we pull kids in to check and check out and S E B groups and stuff, but.
You guys use Swiss to track P B I S? Okay.
Can you speak in English?
That's nothing to do with the school. It's everything to do with. Research. That's what it is. I'm like, okay, how can? It's nice because it has all, um, B C P A, trained every year, be online, everything.
Minors, we think that's pretty much all our kids. Miss Venus.
I'll pick your brain later. Okay.
All right, Mr. Martin. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Lincoln Trail. Well, thank you guys for the opportunity to, to share our school improvement plans again. Um, similar to what Dr. Bagby and Ryan mentioned, this started at a summer B L T and administrative retreat. Where it was the first time that we'd ever had our K-five B L T, which is Building Leadership Team, sorry for all the alphabet soup there, um, come together. So that was, that was a, a good experience, I feel like, that really kind of just set the tone for, for moving some things forward. So kind of our game plan for, um, keeping you all updated, keeping faculty updated would be to include that in our monthly faculty meetings. And kind of spotlight that as well as continue that in, in our board reports. And just another highlight, I think for, for us going into the new school year is C K L A for the win. Um, which is C K L A is obviously our new E L A curriculum. But one of the benefits, I guess, to making a shift in, in curriculum, one of the many benefits in making a shift in curriculum is we did have to kind of reshuffle our schedule a little bit. And for the first time, we, we now have win time, which is what I need for both E L A and for math. We only had time to really fit that in for one or the other, or they were maybe doing two days of one and three days of another. But now through restructuring of our schedule, we do have a dedicated, uh, win time for E L A and for math. And it really pretty closely qual, um, follows their E L A block. Um, so it's, it's pretty, pretty seamless. So similar to Ryan, our, our first goal is just that, to implement our Amplify C K L A curriculum with, with fidelity. Using those Amplify C K L A materials, that was something that was very important to my building leadership team, is literacy every day. Uh, math and literacy every single day. So that means on our early dismissals, like what we have on Wednesday, they restructure those schedules. So that those, those two components are, are included every single day. We have the core four for each of those years. So being in year one of implementation of this three-year goal, we have that teacher manual being our, our left hand or right hand. Depended on which, which works best for you, but really getting to know all the components of that teacher manual. The goal domains, we're going slow to go fast. We are not anticipating that we will implement all of the goal domains this year, and that's okay. Teachers are, are, are aware of that and they're working through that, focusing on engagement strategies. More whole group instruction than what we've seen through the guided reading approach and some of those things. So we have, we have to kind of adjust to that. Um, and then also making sure that all of our students, three, four, and five are taking those digital assessments. We anticipate then, as you can see for year two and year three, what those core four will be, continue to adjust on that. Uh, or build on that, but we're happy to adjust at any point if we see that, oh, hey, this, maybe we need to fine tune this a little bit. I feel like we're already kind of into year two in terms of those engagement strategies. Because teachers are already asking for reaching out to coaches. Hey, what, what else could I do to increase this engagement? We're doing think pair share. We're doing turn and talk. Um, we're leading these other things, but how, how else can I, can I work on this engagement piece? So I feel like staff have really, really embraced that. Um, one thing that was very important also to our B L T team, um, and our grade level teams. Were making sure that we were starting that implementation during the first full week of school in August, which we did. So that unit one for everybody started on, I'm pretty sure our launch day was August eighteenth, somewhere in there. Um, and really making sure that we were sticking to one lesson per day for that first unit. That was definitely a goal that, that we had as we started. We didn't want to get too bogged down. We knew it was introductory and we just kind of wanted to stay the course. Similarly to what Ryan mentioned, his building did today. Our teams also have some P L C times tomorrow where they can unpack each of those units ahead of teaching those units. So that they can go into that instruction piece, really feeling like they know all the components of the lesson. And they've had the opportunity to work through that with coaches. Again, digging through those online assessments, figuring out what that data can tell us will be something that we're learning throughout the process this year. We'll be starting some walkthroughs as just kind of a check for us of like, how well are we doing with implementing this? And giving us that opportunity to reflect and then other ongoing P Ds, both with Amplify and also with, with our coaches. Um, math is also a three-year goal, but I feel like we're maybe a little bit into this cycle a little bit. Because we are in year three of implementing the into math curriculum. So I feel like we, we spent a lot of time last year really focusing on, on pacing, which continues. Because this year our goal is to make sure that we're implementing all of the units for, for into math during, um, during this school year. One of the things that we noticed that on our I A R scores that were typically an area that was, I, I would say just an opportunity for growth for us. Would be on any of those questions dealing with fractions. So Dr. Amy Rourke put together a fraction assessment for us, and that's something that we're really just being purposeful and intentional on. Um, this year is, is some extra attention to fractions. Um, and then as we go into the final year of our into math cycle, we'll really start looking at, okay, what it, what is the data telling us about this math curriculum for our students? Is it meeting the needs of our, of our students? Is it meeting the needs of all of our students? Very similarly, I'm anticipating to what we did for the E L A adoption to go through that process. One of the things that we're also working towards, and Ryan mentioned this as well, is using our data to develop our win time groups. So that that can really be an extension of the core. So the core content would be their grade level content that they're getting from their teacher. But then that win time can be pre-teaching, reteaching, maybe a little bit of both at times. Um, we also have bridges as an intervention, but when time can be that additional opportunity for students that don't necessarily fall below that twentieth percentile that would receive pullout, um, intervention time. And then we also have a grade level, each grade level has a different supplemental that's really dedicated to fact fluency. Um, for, for each of those. Um, at chronic absenteeism or attendance, it, it's a three-year goal. It's an every year goal. It's everyday goal. Um, so I don't feel like that ever really ends. Um, so as Dr. Bagby mentioned, at the end of last year, we really started looking at the way that we report the information. So that we're accurately reporting the amount of time that students are absent. If you're absent one hour, that should not be half-day absence. And so we've really cleaned up that process. And so we are actually getting better data that is, uh, better able for us to use. We start, we get great information from Middletown about students that we're, they're working with and families that they're, they have been working with. So when they transition to our building, we can start reaching out to them early, inviting them to popsicles with the pals. So that that first experience for them at Lincoln Trail is hopefully a positive one. And those students that continue at Lincoln Trail that have maybe historically had some attendance challenges. We can also start reaching out to them for those supports to start with those on, even on the first day or even prior to the first day. One thing that we would like to have coming for next year would be similarly to what I know the high school does, where they have an unexplained list. And so that would be students that we don't know why they're absent. Maybe we haven't had any contact with the family. It's an unexcused absence. Um, teachers are great about this. Um, they are fantastic about this. Like, hey, can you tell me like, how many days has, has little Johnny missed? Or seems like it's a lot of Fridays. Can you check that for me? Um, so I think just bringing awareness to us so that we can kind of look at those lists and see, okay, who might we be able to touch base with? One of the things I love that the junior high did was the signage, right? As you go in the front doors, just showing what the attendance rate is. So we have that on our doors now because it just really makes it aware to our students, our staff. As you guys have mentioned, anybody that comes into the building, you know that that's something that's important. Mr. Rizley works very, very hard on this. It's certainly not the only thing that he does. But it's definitely something that occupies a huge amount of his time or working on those attendance letters. And combing through some of that attendance data with our E O P, Mrs. White in the office. I'm happy to say that we did meet our goal for October for attendance. So we do have a whole school celebration that's coming for our kids later this week. Um, the other person that's really been instrumental with helping with attendance has been Lori Larson with, um, the family engagement position. And just that connection with families and how can we help? Because there, there's always a story. There's always a why behind the, the, maybe the absence or something like that. And really, really partnering around those families. She's been helpful, um, in that process as well. So I think just, um, keeping, keeping ourselves informed of what the attendance data is, has, has really been beneficial to. I know Mr. Rizley kind of has an eyes on attendance, that, that small focus group that, that we're working with. Um, the other piece that we are working through would be the M T S S, which Dr. Bagby mentioned. Din has been crucial through that process as well as we start to look at reviewing that standard protocol. And while our goal intentionally started as more behavioral side of that M T S S diamond. I don't know that you can ever talk about academics without also talking about behavior. So we're kind of bringing, hopefully bringing the two of those together so that we can have some streamlined systems for our tier two-thirds. Because that's how it always defaults to, um, teams. Um, one of the things that our tier one team, they meet once a month and they actually meet tomorrow. Um, one of the things that we look at are those major and minor behaviors. We track those similarly through Skyward and also of course spreadsheet. Um, and so we have a small team that looks at that, that data to see what students are maybe ready for that Bulldog Connect intervention. Or who might need a change in intervention for some other behavior options and things like that. But that tier one team really looks at what is the data telling us? Is there an opportunity here for some reteaching of, of skills, behaviors, expectations, whatever, based on what that data is telling us? So one of the things that we know the data speaking to is that respect is an opportunity and something that we need to reteach and focus on. So we take advantage of the early dismissal days and our encore staff during their time, because it's a shortened time. Instead of continuing with their sort of regularly scheduled encore programming, they take those as opportunities to reteach those expectations. We also do that in some small groups with students as well. Additionally, Mr. Rizley meets with packs, so three or four classes at a time to review those expectations. And that's in addition to what teachers do from the time students walk in the door to the time they, they leave throughout the day. In terms of more the academic piece, um, we do have, I meet monthly with, um, Din. And then also our interventionists are meeting with her pretty regularly to look through that data to see what might be our next steps, um, in helping support all of this. So this, um, this picture, I kind of wanted something that just summed up our school improvement plan in like one picture. And so with a little help from, um, Magic A I and Canva, here's, here's what, here's what we came up with. And so the literacy strategies are what our building talks about literacy every day. And teaching strategies both come with literacy and with math, and that also comes every day. Our student growth and support, that comes through those M T S S systems, those tiers of support to help grow our students. And without attendance going up, nothing else really matters, right? If kids aren't there, they aren't learning. So that's kind of our, every teacher has a copy of this somewhere, um, in their room. Um, just to kind of keep that in the forefront of their mind. Similarly to the photos from Middletown, many of these are just the culminating activities of our C K L A, which has been truly, um, just, it's been a really unique experience to see what kids are learning about, really brought to life in the hallways. They are really proud to put those things up and share those things that they've, that they've learned. Whether it be from learning about the Aztecs and making those Kodak's projects to, you know, learning about poetry, which all three of our grade levels are learning right now. To attendance, obviously being a focus when, when you walk in the front doors. So even just the vocabulary that you hear students using from C K L A when you walk through the hallways, to hear them talking about cenotes. And, um, remember, Mrs. Hunter, we don't meander. Um, that was a vocab word from third grade. So, um, it's definitely, it's definitely coming to life, which has been, which has been really cool to see. So. Questions for me?
I like how you and Ryan, well, and all the principals kind of are between both three-year goals and one-year goals. And I kind of like that you're acknowledging the fact that you're not going to be able to, um, see the growth that you want to see in one year's time. That you're going to actually like, it's, it's a multi-step process. Um, and I just think that like, I, I appreciate that you're giving yourself time, all of you, that you're giving yourself time to get to those goals. Cause I think, um, you guys tend to put a lot of pressure on yourselves of, I need to get from here to here in this, you know, nine-month span. And that's just not reality because you have minor behavior referrals and major behavior referrals and all those other things to do outside of. And that's just not reality because you have minor behavior referrals and major behavior referrals and all those other things to do outside of people. So I think that's a really good idea.
Curriculum adoption is, is a lot.
A lot.
It's a lot. It's been a lot of really good things, but it's not something that you can just implement all of it in one year. So we have to, we have to break that up. And our teachers have done a fantastic job, one of embracing it, but then also giving us feedback about, hmm, I don't know about this. Or how might this work? Great working relationships with the folks from Amplify, who I, I feel like are taking our feedback. And are then, you know, looking to, to make adjustments and, and make things better moving forward. So I think that this, it can be overwhelming, of course. Anything, anything new when you, when you go to do that can be overwhelming. And so I think that our staff have been appreciative of knowing that I'm going to take this piece by piece and looking at, let's focus on, getting really good at maybe these couple of things, and then we'll build on that and build on that. So.
I was just going to add that I think it's great how, I don't want to say piggyback, but like how from going from Middletown to here with the behavior. Like those kids still have those same expectations. And research shows that if we can nip those minor major behaviors in the bud early, when they go to the junior high and high school. You know, that's hopefully going to show, you know, less progression.
Yeah, we for sure reap the benefits of the foundation that they lay here. Because I mean, it's, you can't walk through the halls and not hear expectation after review of expectation. What they do in the health class, the things that they learn in the health class. That saves us a huge amount. I mean, we just reap the benefits of being able to continue to build on that. Because they've had that and had that, whether it started in pre-K or whether it started in kindergarten or even a new student who just started here in second grade. They, they get that over and over and over again. So it's not new when they come to us. And so we don't have to do, exactly, we don't have to do as much teaching as when they come in and there may be still four. Learning, oh, okay, this is what walking in a line looks like. We can make some assumptions about kids walking in lines, right? Because for the most part, our students have, have done that because they were here or even in another building. But, um, we still have to review those expectations, absolutely. So I think that's helpful that the Bulldog Way is something that starts here, but then goes obviously through our high school. Now it may change what that looks and sounds like in a third grade classroom versus a kindergarten classroom. But those elements of respect, responsibility and safety are all, are all core to what, what our kids are doing, hearing. So.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right, junior high, much is what you've heard from the, the other principals. The admin team kind of reviewed past goals and where we were at and kind of where we wanted to go, probably right when school got out last year. We had a great district admin retreat, which kind of we dove into goals. And then later on, we followed up with our own team leader retreat. And kind of just discussed exactly what we wanted to do, what we wanted to focus on for this school year. And as we progress, you know, in our team, monthly team meeting, we'll continue to discuss exactly kind of where we're at. And what we're doing with this year's goals. I think you'll see in an ELA and math goal, we've transitioned from IAR to STAR. So we have instant access to those score reports. Something that was a struggle would be, you know, in June, when we wanted to work on future goals, we didn't get the IAR test results till August, September. And it made it difficult, right? So we've transitioned to STAR, which I think will be a really good, good thing. So as you're going to see and you've seen tonight, in all areas, MSG made growth for, for last school year. And our ELA math growth, and then what we did with attendance was pretty remarkable. So first goal, attendance, and it's a three-year goal. Improve overall student attendance by point four percent, decrease the number of chronically absent students by one percent. And point four, where'd that come from? I'll be honest, when we, in June, we thought we ended the year right around ninety-two percent. So we were going to, our goal was to get to ninety-five because we feel that with everything going on, if we can get to ninety-five, that's really, really good. Well, the, the scores came out on the report card and we were at ninety-four point six. So we still kept the ninety-five and we want to be at ninety-five each of the next three years. But that chronically absent students, we cut that in half last year from twenty-seven point six to thirteen point two. And we want to decrease that to get that to about ten percent. So that's, you know, pure number wise, is that ten percent number would be right around eighty, eighty students. That don't, that miss more than eighteen days, that adds up, right? But when we were at twenty-seven point six last year, that's a heck of a lot more students. So that's kind of our goal is ninety-five percent for overall attendance and then ten percent for chronically absent. And every year we'll, being a multi-year goal, we'll look at it. I mean, if we can, if we can lower that to five percent someday, that would be amazing, but realistic. Trying to hit that ninety-five and that ten percent. We do display the daily attendance in all, our new entrance doesn't have it because obviously we changed that. And we haven't added anything there yet. But when kids get off the bus, they come in right by the cafeteria. When kids get dropped off in the back of the school, when they come in, they see a big sign. And that's updated every single day by Mrs. Zintec, who is our attendance secretary. And it has, you know, the month, the week, and then by the day from yesterday. So really putting that out there, all of our TVs throughout the building, we put stuff on there. I, I will say that, you know, the admin team, we, we come up with ideas. That's Mr. Fisher, myself, Mrs. McGuffey, and Jessica Ryson has been instrumental in giving us some new ideas. If, if you've not seen social media today, it was a tenant scorecard. And how many days we've met our goal so far this year and putting some different things out there. So she has been kind of a, you know, breath of fresh air, giving us, we have the data, we know what we want to do, and then she puts it out there. So kudos to her for helping with that. Implement monthly attendance incentives, whole school and at grade levels. We kind of alternate between a behavior goal and then attendance goal. This month, the attend, there's an overall grade level attendance. And the winter, it's range from literally a popsicle to popcorn we pop for kids. To having pizza, Domino's pizza or whatnot, and giving them a slice of pizza. So what the kids want is food, to be honest, and it motivates them. But our, you know, our teachers push that, right? That's part of the, part of the announcements every morning, they're hearing that. So communicated attendance data to community stakeholders, monthly, quarterly, semester, yearly. Mr. Fisher's sending letters out to parents. We're putting stuff on social media. We are celebrating when, when things are good and just documenting that to, to make everyone aware. Obviously, it's a, it's a top priority, it's a focus. Increase overall supports for students who are on track to be chronically absent. So I'm going to give a shout out to our student services team, that's Mrs. Kyle, social worker, Mr. Remley, our school counselor. Mr. Fisher, Mrs. McGuffey, Lori Larson helps with that. There, there's a lot of wraparound. We're making home visits when we need to make home visits. We're, we are coming up, making, making small deals of like, I just need you to get to school. If so, what do you, like, what kind of, what can we get you? Could it be a candy bar from the concession stand? Can it be small things like that? Whatever the kid motive, whatever motivates the kid, we're trying to think outside the box to get kids to school. Because we know when they get to school. It's much, much harder. So lots of, lots of people have helped with, with where we've been and where we're going and continue to go. Next two goals are pretty similar. This one, three-year goal, by the spring of twenty-six, we reduce the percentage of students not meeting the district STAR reading proficiency benchmark by at least two percent. Currently thirty-six point four percent of students are not meeting proficiency. And that's from the first round of STAR that happened in the first couple of weeks of school. Our focus points would be year one, we would get that red, yellow and blue, increase that by two percent. So that, or sorry, decrease that by two percent to get those, we've broken down sixteen students up into the green. The following year, one and a half percent and another one and a half percent. We will adjust that from year to year. Those aren't set, but it, it breaks it down so you can see the amount of students we're working with to try to get up into that green. Decrease the bottom and get, get those students up into proficient. Action plan activities, core PD, six twelve, we're going to start that this spring in January. Looking forward to that. STAR assessment, three times per year. Next round will be early December, and then we'll do another round in May. And like I mentioned earlier, we will have instant access to those reports of how kids did. So then teachers can change, if we see a real struggle with something, we can change what we're doing instead of waiting, you know, reactively for IAR data. So really, really excited about that. MTSS year two, targeted dimensions at each grade level, that read one eighty and that IXL, both very good. Our MTSS team and having two interventionists at the junior high has been very, very good. Din's been a, a great asset to the team this year, and they're running data meetings and, and that's a fluid thing. If, if kids are struggling, they're going in, and if they're doing really well, they're going out. So it's not, you know, you're not just stuck. We're having those conversations, there's a monthly data meeting and then planning for what that looks like. Special education, we're using Lexia PowerUp, some, some good feedback with that. And then our monthly grade content level, when I mentioned MTSS meetings, we're examining that benchmark data and progress monitoring data. So lots of people involved with that to help some of our students. You'll see that the, the math one is very similar. But currently only thirty-one percent of our students are not proficient. So thirty-one percent of students are down there in the red, yellow and blue. So again, that year one, two percent. To decrease that sixteen students up into the green, year two, one and a half, one and a half. And then that equates to twelve students right now. Those numbers could change and, and we'll continue to look at them. Action plan for the math one, Math Institute of Wisconsin. It's been very, very good so far. We've jumped right in, all of our math teachers. And then even our special education teachers who help with math have been a part of this with, with the high school math staff. And it's, we're creating this shared vision that I'm really excited about. That's not, you know, a six, seven, eight vision and then a nine, twelve vision. We're working together, lots and lots of good conversation during this, the, the PD that's occurred so far. And having some tough conversations on what's best instructional practices within the math. And I'm really excited where it's going and we'll continue that the rest of this year. STAR assessment, like I said, three times a year. MTSS, we're doing a math one eighty pilot, so far so good. And then obviously monthly grade content level MTSS meetings, where we examine that benchmark data and progress monitoring data. So I guess again, the main thing is STAR is a really good tool. And it will give us instant feedback that I'm excited to, to start using. All right, one-year goal is a PBIS. By the spring of twenty-six, we'll strengthen our school-wide PBIS implementation, increase our TFI score to eighty-eight percent. Fostering a positive inclusive learning environment and reducing behavioral incidents. Really the big thing to get that TFI score up and increase it is increase student, family and community engagement. So really putting that information out does a really good job with, with a newsletter, sending that to all stakeholders. And just putting the information out. Our develop and maintain a streamlined PBS data dashboard to allow staff, families and stakeholders easily view school-wide behavior, data and progress towards goals. Increase the number of students receiving appropriate supports across all tiers. And then establish a student PBIS advisory team to provide feedback and ideas for improving school climate and reward systems. So why it's only a one-year goal, they're actually changing the way the TFI score is calculated for the future. So we didn't want to put one that would be like eighty-eight percent this year, and then guess what? It's going to go down to eighty and that's okay. And then back up to eighty-five. So this goal will stick around, but that TFI is going to, going to change and it's going to be harder to achieve a higher percentage. So in theory, next year it may go down, but there's more pieces that go into it that will change. So. Let's see here, academic highlights in the building, there's a lot, but just a few to share. That attendance data on the left is what every single door has, the TVs have it. The leaderboard is from a, a previous first hour attendance. Where, you know, teachers, that, that was ninety-eight point eight, nine percent. And then for each grade level, that was their first hour attendance for a span of time. The poster there that you see, kids created those all around the school. And then we, in their BPH, and then we put them near bathrooms, near hallways, near cafeteria. So it's, it's always neat to see how creative kids can be. And then just a little fact in regards to PBIS, based on first quarter office referral data. Ninety-seven percent of our junior high students are consistently demonstrating the Bulldog Way by being respectful, responsible and safe. This includes students who have received one or fewer office referrals. So perspective, we have eight hundred plus students, ninety-seven percent of them had one or less office referrals at the junior high level. So you're talking twenty-four kids approximately had more than one. So that's, it's a really, really, really good first quarter and hopefully that continues. But very proud of, of the work that Doug and Kaylee and the whole PBIS team have done. The car right there in the front, that's from Mr. Anderson. He first implementing Project Lead the Way with programming. So it's, it was, it's been neat to see the kids build that from all different parts. And then they have to program that to do something. So I just wanted to highlight that because I know he brought, had kids come last year and talked to you. And he just keeps progressing and what they're doing, the kids are just loving it and he's doing a great job with it. So I wanted to highlight that. Questions?
So your three-year goals, like where it says sixteen students, that's sixth, seventh and eighth grade, right?
Yes, yep. Yep, as we're trying to get the bottom up, it's going to get harder and harder. So that two percent right now equates to about sixteen students. So, and we'll revisit that next year to see. Thanks.
I love your leaderboard. Were you going to ask a question?
No.
I love your leaderboard. Did you say that's first hour attendant?
It changes, so yes, I mean, but yes, that, I'm pretty sure that one was first hour. We, we changed, just trying to change it up, like I know it's overall grade level for the month of November. So. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Brennec. Why, it's hard to be last, huh?
It is. Our process has been similar to everybody else's. I do want to note in that our summer retreat was a little earlier in the summer, which gave us more time to kind of analyze and go through things, which was helpful. But similar to everybody else, we took it back as a team and went to our division heads for our summer retreat. And then, you know, that helped form our school improvement plan as it aligns with the district strategic plan. The division heads take it back to the staff when they come back to school. And then we put the final touches on it to start the year. We provide school improvement plan updates at our faculty meetings, especially with attendance rates, freshman on track, things like that. And then new this year, we've started to provide some updates to the principal's advisory council, just to engage the students and get some feedback on that as well. Some highlights from twenty-four, twenty-five. Certainly the attendance piece has been talked about a lot tonight, and I'll touch on that a little bit later in the presentation. We're really proud of that. And then the academic side of the house continues to be strong. Our teachers do a great job as we're getting full points in all our categories and we met our school improvement goals last year. Looking at our math literacy goal to start is, it's, it is a multi-year goal. And we looked at it, how we could, how can we move more kids into being proficient? Currently sixty-seven percent of our ninth, eleventh graders are proficient on PACT, which is a not, or excuse me, nine and ten. And the ACT is obviously for the juniors. We want to increase this to seventy-one percent by the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Tried to break it down by the numbers so you can kind of see the number of students we're talking about attempting to move. Our why is we continue want to address the achievement gap. We'll take a look at some subgroups in there, students honestly in low income, students with IEPs. How can we address some of those subgroups in that achievement gap? And then, you know, the whole goal is, is to really, how can we make, you know, we continue to talk about college and career readiness. And so how can we provide opportunity for making kids dual credit eligible? Even if they're not going to college, there's still a two-year certificate out there they can get and, and those things. And so how can we put them in a position to be, be successful? We also want to make sure that we're, I think by being more targeted on this, we can be, identify our intentional supports on those kids that we're trying to target and move across. Identify intentional supports um on those kids that we're trying to target and move across all those gr- all the grades. Um, much like Mr. Mills, I'm really excited about the Wisconsin Math Institute P D. We started that right when school started. There's been some very good conversation about that. Uh, the six, twelve vertical alignment conversation is, is, is a good one and it's a healthy one to have. Um, we too, this is our first, this is the high school's first dabble into STAR assessment. Um, we've been fast bridge and we've probably been a little bit, we've not had the opportunity to work with a. Like STAR to give us feedback and we're finding it very, very useful. Um, so much so that we have pulled a staff member now out of a, a role in advisory. And so, and it's our first dabble into M T S S where we're having targeted interventions uh with students during our advisory period with one of our math teachers. And the English teacher as well. About um what we can do with that and does that help our two percent in the first year? Um, then new courses that you guys, um, you know, have helped to prove that we've talked about. This is the first year for Applied Algebra Two, uh to see that impact that it's gonna have on some of our students. And then construction geometry is, we've had it on the books, but finally had enough kids where we felt like we could run it, excited to we, uh, what that brings. And then through the whole process, we continue to review our courses. Um, and, and best practices um within our courses through the, through the professional element that our staff's getting. Um, the literacy goal is, is the, much of the why is the same as the math goal. But I wanna touch on, it is a little bit different in how we worded it. Um, and it's similar to the goal last year when we talk about, we wanna get students in the sixtieth percentile nas- nationally. Um, the reason for that is um, the, the cut scores are a little bit different in E L A than what they are math. And truthfully, we're doing, we're doing really well there. Um, so um, we're already at the seventy-one percent. Um, percentile, uh, so math was at, we wanted to get to seventy-one percent. We're kind of already there with the L A. Um, we wanna get more kids up into the sixtieth percentile, which kinda gets them into that cut score that makes them dual credit eligible, if that makes sense. All right, so we're trying to move more kids in that category. There's some, there's more kids to move. Um, it's a little bit, it's a little bit more of a loftier goal. Um, and, and to be truthful, I. We had a lot of conversation about this. Is it too lofty? Have we set the bar too high? I, I don't, I don't think so. Um, we went pretty aggressive the first year because of some of the targeted interventions we've not done before, quite truthfully. Um, to see what we can do there. So you can see by the numbers and the why is much the same. Uh, Mr. Mills mentioned the Core Adolescent Literacy P D. Uh, we're starting that um in um January, as he said. Um, math got started a little bit earlier and truthfully, that was because of funding. Um, um, we, we had had some conversations, our English staff had some conversations. And then when some of the funding challenges came about, um, we kinda hit pause because I think, and I appreciate Dr. Begby's approach. She wanted to get the best P D that we could, most bang for the buck, so to speak. So we, we waited a little bit. Um, they're gonna, again, English-wise, um, review our curricular maps and resources. And then STAR assessment's going to be a, a huge part of it. And then we are, we have the targeted intervention also taking place during our advisory period where we're pulling out those kids based on their STAR assessment and giving them interventions. I can tell you that that is working uh for a variety of reasons, um so much so that kids are saying, what do I gotta do to get out of this? So um, they don't, yeah, I mean, still just laid out there for you. So um, that's been um encouraging to see um some of the movement we've had take place already early in the year. Our student support goal, if you think about P B I S. Um, and, and then all the other interventions that we do, M T S S, as we try to try it, um, put that into one goal. Um, and we really wanna go on feedback because we have a lot going on um with a lot of different people. And the reason why behind the goal, um, and I, and I think as we drill down into our subgroups. Um, that graph represents the number of students that are low income at Mohammed Seymour High School over the years. Um, and where we're at now, and certainly our population has gone up. You know, we're gonna push, we're probably gonna be at eleven hundred students next year, so I would assume that number could rise a little bit more um where we're at. So how do we, how do we have a school culture that contributes to success personally, socially and academically? The first two goals are important, but in my mind, if we don't have this, the first two goals aren't gonna happen. Um, and so we talk about that often somewhere to the other buildings about how important culture and climate are. Um, and then how do we continue to have those conversations with the key stakeholders in that? And that's the students, that's the families, uh, that's our community and our staff and into making that happen. Um, you've heard about the Bulldog Way, it took some students to a, to a leadership conference um just last week. And uh, there were an activity was, is what's your school identity? And I was pretty proud, one of our kids put down the Bulldog Way is, is our identity. Now, we need more of that, um, but it's, it's trending in the right direction and Marissa Burner, her P B S team have done a great job with that. Um, tier-two supports, um, our, I'm really proud, Kevin Flores and some other people have, we've got a peer tutoring program that's up and running. Uh, we have peer tutors every hour during the day available in library and multiple subjects. And we also have kids that come in after school in our homework hangout club and offer support there. So um, and I think we're starting to get past, you know, sometimes high school kids could be embarrassed to work with their peers, to be tutored by a peer. Uh, we're starting to see that, that barrier kinda broken down a little bit and feeling more comfortable about that. And we've, we've done some things to try to, to, to help with that. So excited about the peer tutoring program. Um, the check and connect and check in, check out, just another way to check. Check and connect is our staff that just checks in real quick, in and out. If a kid needs it, check and connect, goes a little bit further. Um, or check in, check out, goes a little bit further and takes a little bit deeper drive, uh dive. Um, at, you know, at one point freshman on track was a school improvement goal. Um, Mr. Mills wasn't lying when he said, we, he was sending us a really good talented freshman class last year. I think we were, we, we almost pushed ninety-seven percent freshman on track last year. I think it was like ninety-six, uh, somewhere ninety-six point nine. So really excited about that. Um, and our sophomore on track, even though it's not track, uh, even though that's not like a school report card thing. We continue, we've, we've started to monitor that, um, same thing. We see similar numbers there. And then new this year, um, Mrs. Burner and part of our P B I S process um is wraparound supports. Um, and that is exactly what you would think it would be, any kid that needs something. One support that I wanna highlight, um, that she's been pretty passionate about, a lot of feedback that we get. And we've seen this, it's just the amount of new students that come to Mohammed Seymour High School, that they move here, that they're freshman year, or they come for a variety of reasons. Um, so we have, and we've always tried to do, uh, we've always had a process, but I don't think anybody's loved it for our new students or our transfer students. So we have a, some teachers, she got pretty intentional about trying to work with some staff and, and forming a new student ambassador team. And so that's up and running. Um, and pretty excited about that, cause that's some of the feedback that we get. It's really hard for students to come here. Um, cause we have high expectations um for a lot of things. And so that, um, I'm excited to see what that, that can do for those students. And then the five essentials is how we'll continue to monitor um our success in this. Um, we, the students, uh, obviously, and at our level can provide a lot of feedback on that, so we take a look at that. And then our staff, um, I, I wish we had a little more parent involvement on that, um, but we don't. So we'll, we'll take the two um that we get and use that to monitor our success. Um, the attendance goal, I, the, 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 I think for us, the attendance goal has been for a number of years. If you go back and look at it, was to return to pre-pandemic levels. And we, we got there um last year in, in student attendance rate, and conic absenteeism and both. So if you go back to um before COVID, um, we got there and some of that's the reporting and stuff, of course, but there's also a lot of work that's gone into it. So uh, we wanna show some, consistently show growth. I, I don't, you know, we had a lot of talk about what, what, what does that need to look like? We left it a little open-ended. Um, cause we're not sure, to be honest. Uh, when, when the school report card data came out here just uh not too long ago, we're like, holy cow. Where, where do we go with this? Um, but you know the why behind the goal? I, I think one, one thing for us is, is the attendance goal impacting the academic goal. We've got some pretty lofty goals academically with our math and, and uh literacy goals. And so we've gotta get kids here in order for those to be successful, cause probably those kids that fall into those. We're talking about moving fifteen, sixteen kids, attendance is gonna play a big role in, in, in those, in those, in those particular kids. Um, we'll continue to use data to analyze our tiered systems of support. And then one of the things that we've done, um, in partnership with the junior high is. Um, we're, we're having um proactive conversations um with freshman families as they come in. So we'll have, we'll call families in in the summer, um, and just say, hey, um, what can we do to get your, to get your student? And have the student come in with the parent and say, hey, what can we do to get you off to a good start? Um, what's, what, what's hard about school? What can we do? Like, what classes do you need to be in? Does math need to be in the morning or does math need to be in the afternoon? Um, and try to get strategic on some of those things with those families. So the first, so the first interaction is not a negative attendance letter or a discipline referral or something like that. It's positive of trying to build that relationship. So we appreciate the junior high support in that. And then the incentives and rewards, um, I, you know, that if we could have a dance about every two weeks, I think our attendance would be through the roof. They, they don't, they, they wanna be, they wanna be, yeah, they wanna be there. But uh, the other incentive that we're tracking right now is if you remember, we put piloting a final exam incentive for seniors based on attendance. And our senior attendance right now is up about two percent. So we'll see where that goes. There's a, and they are. They are having, the kids are, they'll tell you, I mean, they're having strategic conversations about what classes they can miss. They're tracking which finals they can take and so on. It's all, it's all, it's all a thing to them, so. But, but, but it's, but it is, we'll see, we'll see if it continues to work, but right now the data suggests that it is. I just want, I, one highlight um of, of many that I, that I wanted to share with you all. Um, is our uh enrollment in our workplace learning program. Uh, we climbed and really that's probably about capacity, what, what, what we could, could handle um with the number of students. But more impressively is the dual credit and A P enrollments. Again, that's not five hundred ninety-eight kids. A kid can take more than one course. Um, and our enrollment has gone up, so I don't wanna pretend like, you know, we're up, we're up students. Um, but um, I think as we talk about college and career readiness and our staff continues to have those conversations. Um, providing kids and families opportunities for the future has been a priority and a goal. Um, and we're starting to see that hopefully um translate into some success and some, and honestly, some dollars saved for families. As they should get ready to send their kids to their next opportunities. Um, so we're really excited about um our, our current enrollments this year in these classes. Um, one of the things, Dr. Begby and I, uh, it's not in the school improvement plan, but it's a, it's a long-term goal that before I retire. It's kind of a personal goal as well, um, is to bring on a dual cert- dual, uh, dual, um. Dual certification program with Parkland, where, where kids can leave here with a, with a, with a, with a, with their two-year associate's degree. And a high school degree at the same time. Uh, it's, it's a lofty goal, um, but we're, we're closer than I think what people realize. Um, and so hopefully we can, we can make that happen. It's gonna take some work, but. We offer an A P in dual credit and we're, we're close, so. Questions?
Can you back up to that for a second?
Sure.
Have their associate's degree essentially, was that be the equivalent of?
Yes.
That's technically save them two years of.
Potentially, yeah. Correct. Yeah, and, and honestly, when you look at what we're offering now between A P dual credit. And then if, depending if you wanna go to the E C C A program and different things, I mean, w- w- we're pretty close to getting. I mean, we could probably get the first year of your, your first year um knocked out. Between English, math, history, um, and then if you take a couple of A P classes. Where the word's getting out. I mean, that, I think that's why the enrollments are going up. People are starting to figure it out. We've been talking about it for a long time and now it's just, it's starting to.
That's fantastic.
That's really cool.
A lot of value that you're providing.
Yeah, staff's done a great job. I mean, there's, there's three ways on the dual credit that kids can get it. One is we have in-house, which is, in my opinion, probably the best when our own teachers teach it. Um, the second is, is we do have, um, we do have one class where a Parkland instructor comes on campus to teach it. Our medical careers class, and that's seen some, we've seen growth there that we've not seen before. Um, and then certainly the E C C A program where kids can go to Parkland and take classes there as well.
Uh, one thing that I, I kinda saw consistent among all four of you, you uh, different principals or four different buildings was like the, the use of data. That is everywhere that's worked. Um, but especially with the STAR assessment, I, I find it really interesting how you guys all talked about like taking that and like. Reacting to it, like targeting, you know, help or um intervention. And I, I just think that's really awesome, you know, just to actually put that to good use. So not, not really a question, but I just, I just think it's really cool. How you guys are implementing the information that we have coming in, so.
I like, I feel like there's like no trap, no student left behind, you guys. Like you, every student, whether they be the ones that are up here academically, ones with maybe some minor movement behavior problems. Attendance, like every, you guys take into account every single student. And that's amazing. And your, and your presence in all your buildings too, like you go out, even you, like you're out, like the students know who you guys are. So, good job. Don't say that enough. So Chad, there was a, you can sit down. There was. Presenta- I don't remember what year it was, but it has stuck with me and I, I've said it multiple times in, in different settings. But you made this lofty goal of eh, like a hundred percent. I don't even remember what it was, graduation rate maybe.
Freshman on track.
Okay. And. And I remember that you, you stood there and you were like, here's the deal. I understand that a hundred percent is probably impossible. But I can't ask a teacher to look at a kid and say, yep, you're the one who's not gonna be. Who, who's gonna be the one who's not gonna be. And that is what you all are about. Like, the, the, this isn't possible without the belief that you guys have in our kids. And our teachers to teach our kids. And I, like. It's, you, you all have a very hard job and you're all doing an incredible, incredible job. So kudos to you guys. I told you, it's the best meeting of the year.
What, what I find amazing is, you know, it's been a lot of years since we've been a real slouch district, right? I mean, we, we've got a pretty rich history and, and we've grown to where we're at uh as a community and the student count. Especially because people wanna be here or the schools, we hear it all the time. And we just came off of what we could say is our best year ever. We're commendable in all of our buildings. We're something. We're the top of all of our buildings. And uh. And we just kind of pat ourselves on the back and we should. And say, all right, good job. But you're coming at us tonight with, with just challenging goals. Uh, you're using acronym, acronyms a lot of us don't understand, but that's okay. Uh, cause we know you guys do. And, and every year we learn a few new ones and we, we get closer, right? We get closer. Jeff and I are gonna figure this out someday. But uh, and we just keep looking forward into where we can go and it's exciting. Appreciate our principals and our admin staff like crazy. The folks that work for you, our teachers, oh my gosh, you know? It's just a great place to be and it's because, it's because you guys have a tone, it's expectations. And it's that culture tone. That's why people wanna be here. So thank you.
What do you need from us?
Yeah, what can we do?
Realistically. Language is.
We're gonna watch there, we're gonna show up to tutor.
I think we'd have to be qualified for.
Yeah.
I'll do kindergarten.
The peer-to-peer tutor, I thought that was really cool.
I'll speak up. I just, I wanna give you guys props, cause we have a board with a staff on the other side of this through different boards. And just to say that come to this meeting and, and see the teamwork between everybody. It sets the tone here that helps us continue to collaborate and be the leaders that we are. Because I think working together, you're only as good as your team and, and you guys are a great board, so I appreciate you, you all.
I just want you guys to have confidence to be able to do things and take risks, get out of your comfort zone, make your buildings better and know that we'll, we will support you.
I didn't answer the question though.
How did you give them their baskets for principals appreciation day? Let me guess, let me guess. Or does it pull over in navy blue? No, okay.
See, it's a secret because maybe you guys might be getting the same thing. Well, I'll phrase the question other way. What, what do we need that we do? What would you like to do that we've not been able to do?
Other than build a junior high.
Don't get me, sir. And you probably don't wanna tell us and that's okay, but tell Dr. Lee.
Speak up. I think you have a strategic plan and you're holding Dr. Lee to that strategic plan. That Dr. Lee's then holding all of us, everybody here to that strategic plan and it's showing, right? And it's, it's showing. Um, I think we've been, I'll just speak to this. And it's, it's showing, um, I think we've been, I'll just speak to this, I think we've been really smart in the last. Few years of who we've hired and what positions. And like I spoke of Jessica Bryson, she's been a game changer for, we've had these ideas, but not the knowledge or the know-how how to do it. And she's just running with them, right? That's just one example, I mean, another example is Denver, sitting back here, phenomenal, I mean, meeting with her monthly and all the work she's doing. Um, so keep, keep going with that strategic plan and keep working with Dr. Lee of, I mean, the direction we're going. Like, I mean, and kudos, like Ryan said, to each and every one of you of having confidence in us and. What we do on a daily basis and being appreciative, so, thank you.
Anything we should stop doing? You all have full plates, is there anything that you would abandon or get rid of? Not effective.
Good question, Jeff.
You don't have to have the answer tonight, but I would challenge you to think about what's not as useful as it once was.
We need to get rid of. As you know, we have a lot of faith in the confidence.
All right, well, under those things. Tell Dr. Lee.
Tell us.
Tell our students. All right, any other questions?
Sure to take back to your buildings our congratulations to.
Um, okay, a closed session is necessary tonight for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees. Uh, we do need a roll call vote to go into closed session at this time. We do not anticipate any business once we come out of closed session, so once we go to go into closed session, we will turn off YouTube. Um, all right, let's do a roll call, oh no, I needed, I needed a motion to go into a session for that reason, thank you, can I have a second? All right, now we do a roll call, we, Danster?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
The phone?
Yes. Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Nick Murray?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to go into closed session, we do not anticipate any business once we come out of closed session, so we'll turn off YouTube.